Call on McLean County zoning board to order. Will the secretary call the roll?
Mary Beth Taylor.
Here.
Brian Bangert. Michael Kuritz.
Here.
Rick Dean.
Here.
Julia Turner. Drake Zimmerman.
Here.
Jim Finnegan.
Here. Five members we can, as a quorum, so we can conduct business. Has everyone looked at the minutes from last month?
I moved.
Second.
I don't know who did that for sure. You guys talked over each other. Rick and Rick Dean made a motion and Mike Kurz seconded. Could we have a roll call vote?
Oh, Taylor?
Yes.
Kuritz?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Yes. That passed. At this time would, we have a time for anybody that wants to talk to us about something that's not on the agenda. It's your chance to talk to zoning board about that. And I don't know, I think we need to give them a minute or so to respond to this. Is that right, Phil?
Yes, we'll have to wait at least a minute and a half. And in the meantime, for anyone who's listening on YouTube, if you would like to give testimony at this meeting, I'm going to give you a phone number and then an access code that you can use to listen live to this conversation and this public hearing. The phone number to call is 1-877-309-2073. Access code 536-659-109. If this doesn't work for you, call our office number at 309-888-5160 and we will give you this, this number and access code. Thank you.
Just for the record, there will be a time for it to give questions from everybody's, the cases or testimony, two different things.
Can you finally get it figured out here?
I think Brian has joined us.
Does anybody see his video?
I don't.
I see it. Clear or on the right-hand side?
I think I can see him, but he is dark.
Oh, I see him. Okay, for the record, Brian Bangert arrived at 7:07 PM. Thank you.
We won't knock his pay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You think we've given enough time, Phil?
Yes, I do.
Would, at this time, would like to affirm the staff. Do solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the testimony you should give in this case now in hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, or that you suffer the pains and penalties of perjury.
I do.
Okay, well, secretary call the first case.
This is case number SU-20-03, application of Lake Bloomington Marine LLC by Eric Pocarni, president. Were special use to allow boat sales and service facility in the agriculture district on property which is part of the southwest quarter of section five township 25 north range three east of the third principal meridian in Money Creek Township at 25182 north 1925 east road Lexington, Illinois. Public notice of this hearing was published in the panograph on May 16, 2020. As provided by law, all the other required notifications have been made. The applicant has paid the publication cost. I'm not going to show you all the exhibits. Most of them were all attached to your staff reports. The first is an application for the special use. And then the first attachment is a plat map that also was distributed to you and a zoning map that shows that this property is in the agriculture district. And a communication from the county health department indicating that they are in support of this special use that Mr. Pocarni has been in touch with Jared Johnson at the county health department who has signed off on this. And a communication from Jerry Stokes, a county engineer who indicate that they also recommend approval of the entrances, that trees have been removed that were, they were proposing to have get rid of. And then as an attachment, number two is a site plan that was in your staff report that shows this new construction is the primarily first building that Mr. Pocarni proposes to build. And it shows the other buildings that he'd like to build in, in the future. And it shows the existing buildings on the property. And then it shows an elevation and a floor plan, elevations and floor plan of this proposed new building. And we'll show photos of the property at this time. They'll be on your screen. Gerald? Gerald's working on getting the photos going. This is the property facing north on the county highway. Property is to the left there where these trees are located. The trees that needed to be removed are removed. And this is facing south on the county highway. The, the, the grassy property is the subject property and the property in the background to the right is the field that is adjacent to it. Next. And this is the property across the road in crop production. And this again is the property to the southwest. And this is facing where the old house used to be and the barn facing straight west. And those are the buildings that are on the property, those two of the buildings. And then this is facing north again, and this is the building that's closest to the road. And this now we're just a little bit further west. And now we can see the two buildings in front of us. This is the same building that you saw in the foreground. And this is the, the farm field to the west of the property. And this is along the north property line. There's a farm field to the right, which is to the north and facing west. And then the area photo of the property. And if you see, there used to be a house on it, which is at the the southeast corner. This is the staff report for the special use. Property is surrounded by the property in the agriculture district. The, the topography is relatively flat. It drains to the northeast. The public road is 22 feet in width. It's an asphalt road. The property is surrounded by land in crop production. And the analysis of the standards are as follows. The proposed special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the health, safety, morals, comfort, or welfare of the public. And this standard is met. A boat sales and service facility is allowed by special use in the agriculture district if it is located within 1.5 miles of a lake or water impoundment of at least 40 acres in area. This property is located less than a mile from Lake Bloomington. The applicant proposes to expand the business of Lake Bloomington Marine on this property, which currently operates at 17459 east 2500 north road in Hudson. The, but the business customers in the Lake Bloomington and Evergreen area with boat sales, boat service, and boat storage. The applicant is a licensed South Bay pontoon, low boats, Mercury Marine dealer. The proposed special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for purposes already permitted or substantially diminished property values in the area. This standard is met. The property is surrounded by land and crop production and would not likely negatively impact nearby properties. Nearby land and crop production would continue to be, continue to be desirable for such use. The proposed special use will not impound the orderly development of surrounding property where use is permitted in the district. And this standard is met. Nearby land and crop production would continue to be desirable for such use. For adequate utilities, access roads, greenies, and or other necessary facilities have been or will be provided. This standard is met. The county health department has signed off on the proposed special use. The property has 325 feet of frontage on the west side of county highway 29. The Lexington Community Fire Protection District provides fire protection for the subject property. Five adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. This standard is met. The highway department has signed off on the two entrances to the property. Six, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of the special use will be in conformance with the intent of the district in which special use is supposed to be located. And this standard is met. Seven, the proposed special use in all other respects conforms to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located. And this standard is met. Staff recommends that this application meets all the standards set forth in article eight, section 350-56 of the county code. That concludes my report.
Mr. Pocarni, would you like to be sworn in?
Yeah, that would be fine.
Okay, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you should give in this case now in hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? So, if you got it.
I do.
Would you state your name and address for the record?
Eric Pocarni, 24441 Anderson Drive, Houston, Illinois.
Okay. Did you get that, Phil?
Yes, I got it. Thank you.
At this time, would you like to make an opening statement?
Um, I guess the thing I really have to say is when this all started, you know, I always respect the process. But after going through everything and getting to where we are tonight, I understand the process a lot better. And I just want to thank Phil and the health department, county board, highway department. It's nice to see everybody work together to, to make something like this to get to where we are tonight. You know, a lot has changed since I sat in front of this board last time in the world. So it's, it's good to sit here and, and have something good going on, something good for, for the people around here, for the county, for my business. You know, right now I think growth, growth is a good thing. So again, I just want to thank everyone involved for getting to the point we're at tonight.
Thank you. Would anyone on the board have questions as witness? Would staff have questions?
No.
Okay, at this time, we're going to open it up to the public for questions. And we'll give them a minute or so. I guess you got to tell me then what, how we're doing. So if it's okay to go ahead, we're going to go ahead and ask for testimony.
Yes.
So is anyone in the audience wanting to give testimony in this case? Now is your time.
Yes, it is.
Mr. Chairman, this is just a little tidbit. I think they all showed up last time.
You're probably right, Rick. I don't know if it's safe to proceed or not, but I think we are. Okay, at this time, it would be proper if you want to give a closing statement, Mr. Pocarni?
I guess my closing statement would just be pretty much the same as my opening. It's just, thanks for hearing my case. And, you know, I look forward to seeing where we can go from here. Thank you.
Well, thank you. This part of the hearing is closed and we can go to the standards in this case unless someone has a question about it. Well, ahead of time, but I think it's pretty clear cut. We just count the standards off and, you know, if somebody give me a thumbs up, then we'll move on. So standard number one. Standard number two. Three. Four. Five. Six. And seven.
I'd move that we recommend approval of SU 20-03.
I second that. I got a motion by Kurz, but I missed to second it. I'm sorry. I second. Brian, Brian, Brian. So motion by Kurz, second by Bangert. We have a roll call vote.
Taylor?
Yes.
Bangert?
Yes.
Kuritz?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes. Motion passed and Phil will tell you what you need to do from here.
This will go to county board on the consent agenda, which takes place two weeks from tonight on June 16th. And you don't need to attend that meeting. You can check, they meet in the evening now. So you wouldn't be able to check with us until the following day on the 17th. And I'll send you a letter to the, the results of this thing. And you may get a permit to build this if they approve it on the, on the 16th.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to the next case, SU 2005. Will the secretary call this case?
This is case number SU-20-05, application of Wilbur Ludwig to amend special use case SU-8709 for a planned unit development for the Prairie Commercial Park to add an outdoor recreation tennis court in the M1 restricted manufacturing district. This is on property which is part of the southeast quarter, section 32 township 24 north, range three east of the third principal meridian located in Tuanda Township at 14051 Prairie Commercial Park, Bloomington, Illinois. Public notice of this hearing was published in the panograph on May 16, 2020. As provided by law, all the other required notifications have been made. And the applicant has paid the publication cost. The first exhibit is the application. And it indicates that this property is owned by Bloomington Normal Property Holdings LLC. Prairie series. Patrick F. Bush is the manager. And Wilbur Ludwig is one of the other managers. As a, an exhibit is the plat map showing it on the screen above. And this property is zoned M1 restricted manufacturing district. But you notice where this property is located, just almost right on the edge of Bloomington. So it used to be out in the country, but it, the, the city of Bloomington has moved closer. The, the St. Patrick's Church of Myrna is located at the corner there. We have a communication from the County Health Department indicating that they're okay with this proposed use. A narrative from the applicant, which was part of the packet that I sent you with the staff report, and he indicates that, Mr. Ludwig indicates, we are wanting to add an outdoor recreational facility, the facility would be for the, for tenant usage, instructional usage, and usage by the owners, it is a goal of our department to continue to make capital expenditures to improve the property at Prairie Commercial Parks, sincerely, Wilbur Ludwig. And, uh, another, uh, as the second attachment is a site plan, two-page site plan that was attached to your staff reports. And now I'll show the other photos of the property. This is the aerial photo of the property, the, the tennis court's gonna be located at the southeast corner where those, where you see the trees. And this is Route Nine facing toward Bloomington or west, the facility is to the right there, you can see the sign for the Prairie Commercial Park on your right there. And this is facing east on Route Nine, and the subject property is on the left. The property across the road is in crop production, and this is angling toward, uh, the Prairie Commercial Park businesses here. Facing northwest, and this is facing straight north up the driveway of Prairie Commercial Park. And this is facing a little bit to the northeast, and where the tennis court will be located is in that grassy area. And then this is facing straight toward the house on the property, which is a, uh, is for watch persons, uh, to be in the M-one district to watch the facilities, and then this is the grassy area where the tennis court will be located. And then facing to the northeast, and you can see it's, the next to it is, uh, the property next to it is in crop production, and there's residential use over there, you can see the cell tower. This is now, uh, up at the north edge of where the tennis court will be located, uh, facing south toward Route Nine straight ahead, and that's a farm field that's on the other side of Route Nine, tennis court will be right in front of us here. And this is the residence on the property, the garage, just north of the tennis court. And this is facing east across, uh, from the driveway where the tennis court will be located. And this is, these are commercial buildings that are located just across the driveway. In the aerial photo, I'll deliver the staff report at this time. Uh, the topography is relatively flat, it drains to the south, uh, the public road is twenty-nine point five feet in width, it's an asphalt road, uh, the property to the north and south and east is in the agriculture district, the property to the west is primarily public land institutional district and are two mixed residential district, just a sliver of it is next to the residential district, which is, uh, west of this property and toward the north end of it. Uh, the surrounding land use is, uh, crop production to the northeast, east and south, and to the west is a residential subdivision and an, um, and an outlaw. Uh, the, the standards of the ordinance are as follows, one, the proposed special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the health, safety, morals, comfort, or welfare of the public, and this standard is met. The applicant proposes to amend special use case SU Dash Eighty Seven Dash Zero Nine for a planned unit development for the Prairie Commercial Park to add an outdoor recreation area or tennis court. The tennis court would be for tenant usage, instructional usage, and usage by the owners. The planned development includes several light industrial and commercial uses. Two, the proposed special use will not be dangerous to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for purposes already permitted or substantially diminished property values in the immediate area, this standard is met. The proposed tennis court would not likely negatively impact nearby properties if the outdoor lighting is directed to the property. The proposed tennis court would be more than five hundred feet from the nearest residential lot, the nearest property line for the facility is in crop production. The planned unit development contains buildings in commercial use and a residence used as a watch person dwelling. Nearby land use for residences and crop production would continue to be desirable for such use. Three, the proposed special use will not impede the orderly development of the surrounding property for uses permitted in the district, this standard is met. The property to the north, south, and east is in crop production, nearby land for residences and crop production would continue to be desirable for such use. Four, adequate utilities, access roads, drainings, and other necessary facilities have been or will be provided, this standard is met. County Health Department has signed off on the septic system on the property, property is approximately five hundred feet of frontage on the north side of Illinois Route Nine. The Tuanda Township Fire Protection District provides fire protection for the subject property. Five, adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and ingress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets, and this standard is met, existing interest Illinois Route Nine is adequate to serve the proposed use. Six, establishment, maintenance, and operation of the special use will be in conformance with the intent of the district in which is, is located, and this standard is met, and the proposed special use in all other respects conforms to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located, and this standard is met. Staff recommends that this application meets all the standards set forth in the county code, provided lighting for the proposed tennis court is shielded to direct lighting to the subject property. That concludes my report.
Mr. Ludwig, would you like to be sworn in?
Yes.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony should given in this case now in hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so forgive God?
Yes.
Would you state your name and address for the record?
Wilbur Ludwig, Fifteen Twenty-Six Beckenham, Bloomington.
You got that, Phil?
Yes, I do.
Okay, at this time, you can make an opening statement.
Okay, I just want to thank everyone for all the help that they gave me, this, I don't do this very often, so I appreciate everybody's help, I really do, other than that, um, I think it'll be, uh, asset to that, we're trying to get that place looking better and better, and I think it's really gonna, be really gonna be nice when it's all finished out. Thank you.
Thank you. Would, uh, anyone on the board have questions for Mr. Ludwig?
Well, how much li- lighting do you propose to have?
Not very much, in fact, right off the bat, we're not gonna have any, um, that's, we put that in there, so if later on we decide to, but really, we might, we may, might not have any lighting for, we might not have any lighting, i- it'll be very minimal.
Okay.
Is this what I would call a siren property, or is it next door?
Yeah, this is a siren property, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Phil, do you have any questions?
We do not.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna ask anyone in the audience in, uh, go to meeting land, if they have questions for this witness, we're gonna give them some time to call in.
Jim, do you think you could perhaps ask for testimony too, we might save a little time?
I didn't know I could do that. We can ask for questions or testimony at this time if somebody wants to call in. Okay, sounds like we're safe to move on. Would you like to make a closing statement, Mr. Ludwig?
I just again want to thank everybody.
Yeah, thank you. This part of the hearing is closed, and, uh, you wanna just move to the standards again? We'll call the standards off, standard one, give me a thumbs up, standard two, three, four, five, six, or seven?
I'd move that we recommend approval of case SU Twenty Dash O Five.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Curz, a second by Taylor, so we have a roll call vote.
Did you want to recommend that one condition?
Sure.
Taylor?
Yes.
Binger?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Motion passed, and, uh, Phil will take over from there.
Uh, Mr. Ludwig, this is a recommendation of the County Board, they'll vote on it at, uh, their meeting in two weeks, which is on the sixteenth, and you can call our office on the seventeenth to find out the results, and we can take a permit, uh, once you get your construction plans ready to go on the seventeenth, uh, I will send you a letter, uh, giving you the results of this, uh, decision by the County Board, and if you have any questions, just call us tomorrow, or you can ask me right now.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Do we have any other business, Phil?
I wanted to discuss the, the, the calendar a little bit in July. The one having to do with the letter of credit for surety for wind farms, uh, has been being kicked down the road because it's a little bit difficult to have questions and giving testimony on this, uh, this type of a public meeting, uh, but we're gonna, have a discussion of that, hopefully, if you all are avail- available, and I've talked about this with the applicant, we have two cases that are, have been applied for, one has that to do with that letter of credit, and then the other, another case has to do with raising the, the maximum height of wind turbines from, uh, the current regulation, which allows them to be up to five hundred and fifty feet, the, the application is to raise that maximum height to six hundred and seventy-five feet, so we would have that public hearing, if we could, on July twentieth, which is a Monday, a meeting on the third Tuesday of the month anymore in the evening doesn't work very well because the County Board now meets in the evening on the third Tuesday of the month, so having a ZBA meeting on the same night as the County Board meets is problematic, so, uh, I'm proposing, and I talked this with, as I mentioned with Jim, Mr. Finnegan, that, uh, we would like to have it on July twentieth, and in the future, perhaps, as long as these Zoom-type meetings continue, uh, I would like to have the opportunity to schedule cases on the third Tuesday of the month, but in any case, uh, we will meet on, uh, July seventh, and we'll have some cases that are not very controversial, although one of them is a continuation of a solar farm, and one of them has to do with a, um, a marijuana growing facility, I don't think they're gonna be controversial, but they were a little bit more controversial than the ones we've had for the last couple months, so that's why I've been kicking them down the road, but we can only kick them down the road for so long, and then these applicants want to be heard, so we will have at least those two cases July seventh, and we'll have the, uh, the two cases having to do with wind farms, and those are text amendments on, uh, July twentieth. I'm available for your comments, are you, are you, would you generally be available on the twentieth of July?
For one of these or for, uh, in person?
One of these.
Yeah, I'm gonna be in Florida probably, but I can still do it.
Well, that makes it even easier for you, doesn't it?
Yeah, don't have to miss it.
Yeah. I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I would be okay too, Phil, what's, uh, what's our opportunity to get together as a group and, uh, do social distancing, is it not an option?
Mr. Dean, could you repeat what your request was there?
It's just a question, Phil, what's our opportunity to get together in person and do social distancing, is that not an option?
You mean for a public hearing?
Yes, yes.
Okay, you know, you didn't mean for like a social, you meant for a public hearing.
Yeah, no, I wasn't talking about the picnic, I was talking about a public hearing, yep.
We are, we're really not available to do that yet, and we don't know where we're gonna be in July, but we can't do it at this time, you can't have meetings with more than ten people, and you have to have social distancing, and the concern is with more controversial cases with seven zoning board members, and there's likely to be more than three public.
Okay, thank you.
As, uh, are we generally then okay with scheduling a meeting then on July twentieth?
Yeah, I should be okay.
I wanted to let you all know too that, uh, Mr. Zimmerman is, is, uh, term ends, uh, in June, and he's requested to be, uh, an alternate versus a regular member, so he'd either want to get off or be an alternate, so I begged him to be an alternate, and so Ruth Nova said, if the County Board approves her and him, they're, they, they will vote on that at the next County Board meeting, so, uh, uh, Ruth may be the next regular member at, uh, the July meeting.
It's been a good fifteen years, thank you. Great experience.
So five.
Thank you.
Since I had Eric.
We're gonna miss that dry humor. We're gonna miss that dry humor.
He'll be back. Like Arnold, Arnold's force, and he'll be back. Okay. I think at this time, we better close it down, they probably want to go home, so we're gonna call the meeting closed for the night, appreciate everybody coming in, be careful on your way home.
Yeah. Thank you.
Stay safe.